Hi, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. We did have an executive session earlier and now we're convening in open session. We open all our meetings with the pledge of allegiance, so everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna share the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Is anyone here who would like to make a public comment either in studio or on Zoom? We have a full audience tonight, which is wonderful. So I don't see any public comment and none on Zoom. Do we have a student advisory tonight? I don't think anyone could join us. So no student advisory. Do we have a consent agenda?
We do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the November 28th, 2023 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the December 4th, 2023 School Committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee Meeting and the December 5th, 2023 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. It's a roll call vote. Is Eileen on the...
I'm here.
Hi. Okay. Eileen, we're gonna do a roll call vote tonight for all our votes. So go ahead, Judy.
Ms. Collard?
Yes.
Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
Mr. Deardis?
Yes.
Ms. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Dr. Biscaba?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Do you want to budget items next or your section next?
It's your call.
Yeah, I'm gonna reverse the order. I'm gonna do the superintendent, just 'cause we have so many guests.
That's fine.
And I know probably maybe some have homework or have to be somewhere else. So we'll start. The floor is yours, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna ship comments and updates to the end if I can.
Great.
Would like to start right off with welcoming Ms. Langloy and her students to come and talk about their trip this fall. You're welcome to come up to the table.
You can feel free to drag another chair next to Ashley. You can just, yeah, there you go. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lehman, for inviting us here today to talk about our trip to Camp Borndale this year. We switched it up a little bit this year. In years past, when they've been going, I asked Cindy Fitzpatrick, who is our Camp Borndale guru who took a step back this year, how long they've been going, and she couldn't remember. So she's thinking definitely over 30 years they've been going to Borndale. I'm not, I know there are a lot of teachers at the Galvin that went, but we don't have an exact date. So this year, we decided to have the kids do three classes instead of leaving and going to Plymouth-Pituckset, as we had in the past. And the reason behind that was, not this past summer, but the summer before, Jason Pavy, our social studies coordinator, curriculum coordinator, had seen an article in the paper about the Wampanoag natives being unhappy with the state of the indigenous site at Plymouth-Pituckset. So he had asked last year if we could switch. Cindy thought it had been, it was too late in the game to switch. So this year, we did make the effort and the decision to change and do three classes instead. And I've got Eloise and Frankie here to talk about their experience. Do you have any questions for me before I move on?
Do you think the cabins were brand new 30 years ago?
Let's hope. Let's hope. They certainly are not new now. And I see, I've got a whole bunch of chaperones, former chaperones here with us tonight. So both of up here and behind me, so.
I'm Frankie McPherson. Marine biology was awesome. Dissecting shark was very fun. It's good to learn about new things, about animals and all of that stuff. And rocketry was especially fun 'cause you got to see your rocket like go flying up into the air, and that was really fun. And Project Adventure was really fun 'cause you got to figure out new ways and ways to get over things and new ways to think. And my favorite part about that was probably getting over the 10-foot wall using teamwork, which was very cool for me. And my favorite was definitely Project Adventure, 'cause you got to do active things. So did rocketry, but I'm more of like a sports person and I like being active, and that's why I love that one. I did meet new friends and I got to get close with other people that I already knew from other, like, sports and being all around Wakefield. And...
How were the cabins and meals?
The cabins were awesome. It's, I mean...
Frankie, I love you. I respect that kind of last year. I'm not sure what I'm saying.
It's, I mean, it's, it was fun. It was fun. It was a good amount of space. We all had our own little corner, which was nice. But it, I mean, it was, I mean, the fact that we were just there was fun. And the meals were amazing. I thought it was great. I have a food allergy and I had to be gluten-free. And being there, they served my plate, they gave me options, and they gave it to me before anyone ever got their meal, which was great. It's, it feels like you're not left out. You can't have like all that other stuff, but they, the food was very good and it just made me feel good that they know that people have allergies and they try to help it. I would love for the fifth graders next year to go. I think they'll have a great time and it will be a great experience for them as it was for me.
You could be crying because you felt so special.
And Ms. Eloise?
My name is Eloise. Ref time was really fun because you gotta like play basketball, play tennis, soccer, gaga ball, and you gotta connect with people that you haven't seen in a while, or that's on a different team than you. And it's very social, too.
Did you like the classes?
I really liked the classes 'cause there are three different types of options that you could have. You could have like sporty, so ocean, like marine biology stuff.
And rocketry.
Rocketry. So there was like something for everybody there.
And this year, we had a very special guest. We had a, Jen Hart brought her therapy dog, so that helps some of the kids who are a little nervous. Eloise, what was your mom's favorite part of the trip? Mom chaperones. What did your mom love?
Me.
Did she like the entertainment at night?
Uh, yes.
Which was?
We did karaoke, which was really fun. And we got, and we also did like dancing, and that was also really fun.
Did mom sing?
No.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for these guys?
I just wanna say thank you for coming out tonight to speak with us. I love hearing about Borndale. My youngest son went last year, and I will say, I think the decision to not go to Plymouth-Pituckset was definitely the right one. It was clear to me, having been there many times over the years, just seeing it was nothing like it used to be during my visit. So I just wanted to add that. But thanks for coming out to speak to us tonight.
Thank you.
Great job.
I heard the cabins were good. One thing I heard was that at the beginning, like when students got there, they really were looking for like the window seat, like sort of, 'cause you could see the ocean.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I understand that as the evening progressed and kids were going to bed, the wind picked up, and all of a sudden, the window became not the best place to be. And so there was a lot of kids maybe wanting to move to a back room.
Yeah, so I was near the window, so yeah, that definitely happened.
I also, I heard the shark dissection was awesome.
Yeah, it was, it was super fun.
My kid is very much into nature, so he was, he thought that was the super cool part.
That's good. And we were very lucky to have Mr. Ingalls' wife join us as a chaperone as well. So, and just saying, if we could figure out a way, school committee, to streamline the fingerprint process, that would be, would get yelled at less. Parents yell at us when they find out they have to pay to get their fingerprints done. Not all, but a few. And then just having one person able to look at the fingerprints instead of also somebody at the Galvin in administration having that ability as well.
I think we can help with that.
That might be helpful. Thank you.
I also just wanted to say that the idea, having this trip sort of early on in the school year, for fifth graders especially, is such a great move for exactly the reasons Eloise and Frankie said, getting to meet other kids from other teams, other schools that they might not know as well, and really have team building. This early in the school year for kids coming in together, I just think is absolutely the right call. And I love that the trip happens when it does. I was thinking that it was gonna be chilly. I didn't hear anyone complain about the cold, so that's fantastic.
It was beautiful this year.
Wonderful. Such a brilliant idea, and I'm glad you guys had a great time. And thank you for coming and sharing your experience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
So I just wanna say thank you as well to the students and especially to you, Sue. I know this, you know, trips like this are being canceled all around the state because they're getting more and more difficult to staff, more difficult to pull off, and they're, I think that they're really valuable. And I think it's just a nice way. And the timing of the year pays a terrific benefit because kids make relationships and kind of experience things that they wouldn't normally experience with other kids earlier in the year. So I think it pays a dividend all year. And so, thank you so much.
And it all, you're very welcome. We love doing it. And it also is very beneficial for us to be able to see kids in their element.
Yeah.
With their friends. That is really, I didn't have a lot of people playing dodgeball this year. That kind of bummed me out. We only had a few. But it's really fun. So thank you for allowing us to still do it. We love the trip and thanks for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we're welcoming Brendan Kent, and he's brought some athletes with us. So in our, in our last meeting, we, some of the teams were split and the students weren't able to make it. And so we're able to welcome Brendan back and hear, be able to hear from some of the athletes. So please pull up, pull up chairs.
Need stadium seating for the table, I guess.
Right? Do you guys get tired of carrying around the trophies?
Is there gonna be a facilities request for our new case?
We're gonna, it's, it's...
We need a bigger trophy case in the new school.
So thank you for having me again. It's, I honestly don't know what to say over the past few years. You know, we've, the past two years, we've had a tremendous amount of success. And these athletes, as well as some of the other student athletes of the other fall teams, have definitely carried that over. We had an unbelievable season again. Two, two teams won state championships and a bunch of others came very, very close. Unfortunately, not all the team cabins could make it tonight 'cause basketball's playing tonight and hockey. But we have two of our cabins here, as well as some underclassmen that played some huge roles on our teams. So I'm gonna leave it up to the student athletes to talk about their accomplishments. And I'm just gonna pass it down the line if you guys wanna introduce yourselves first.
I'm Lily Sully, and I'm a junior.
Thank you, Lily.
I'm Charlotte O'Neill, and I was one of the senior cross-country captains this year.
I'm Grace Brackett, and I'm a junior on the cross-country team.
I'm Reed Fessel, and I was one of the captains on the soccer team.
I'm Charles Gagne. I'm a junior, and I was also on the soccer team.
There's two mics on the table, too, in case you guys are... So I guess we can start with the girls' cross-country team. Went undefeated in the regular season. Lily also came in first place in the middle six league, the entire league at the league meet. I think there was, how many runners? I think close to 90, right? Close to 90 runners. She came in first place, the whole league. They then went on to win the Division 2V state championship, and then went on to win the D2 All-State championship. So I don't know if girls, you have any experiences you wanna talk about?
In my four years of experience running cross-country, I've learned that the sport can be very physically and emotionally demanding. Before the season started, my biggest worry as a captain was keeping team morale high during the very intense training, the six-day, a week training that we were gonna experience in the next couple of months. And the girls on the team, they made it really, really easy to keep team morale high and keep a positive environment. And I'm very proud of every single one of the girls on my team this season. And I'm really sad to be leaving next year, but I know that they're gonna continue keeping the team legacy. Really great.
Yeah, I think going off of what Charlotte's saying, it kind of went back to the summer when, so for a cross-country, we train all summer to prep for the fall races. And in June, we kind of promised to ourselves and to each other that we would like work hard all summer 'cause we know how important it is in the fall. So we all promised each other, we all kept those promises, and we all showed up every day to practice at like 8:00 AM every day in the summer, which is not the most fun thing to do, but we did it. And it carried over into the season, and everyone was really supportive of each other. And once we started gaining success, we started gaining more motivation, and we just kept training. And yeah, we, everyone was super uplifting, and we knew that to pull off the things we needed to pull off, we would need to work together. So we did a really good job, and it was nothing but a positive experience.
Not only did we get the motivation from each other on the team, but we also got motivation and positive feedback from our coach Karen and also all of our families. Every single dual meet and invitational, we had all of our families there, not only supporting just your child, but everyone, boys and girls team. They were able to keep us pushing through races, cheering for us. And also, our coach was a huge part of our motivation and strength. She always had motivational quotes to give us at practice or meet days that kept us going. Also, would help us through hard days to know that even if we have a hard day, we can come back the next day and be 10 times better. We don't know what we would have done without our coach Karen. She continues to uplift us and support us every day, even though we're, she's not our coach for the season. And our team is very grateful to have her be a part of our program.
I don't know if there's any questions for the girls before we move on to the boys?
Yes. Maybe it's more of a general cross-country question. Just congratulations. And I can't believe, like, you came in first. That's, that's huge. And I think Dr. Lyons was saying, you passed the mic right over. Wow, that was fantastic. I was curious in terms of, so soccer is a team sport. When I think of cross-country runners, I think of you as being more individuals, but you talk a lot about your team and your, how you motivate each other. And what other ways do you think of yourselves? Like, how do you keep that cohesion? When like you kind of run your own race, but there's, I imagine that you play off of each other sort of in a way that keeps that teamwork together. How does that work?
One thing we were definitely really lucky to have this year was depth. And every single team can be good with one or two really good runners. But in the end, at states and all states, it comes down to the depth. We were able and lucky enough to have all seven of us be really good. And we all pushed through all states. And you could see Lily finish first, and she turned around, and you could just see us all coming in like hoping we did it, knowing we put everything into that race. And it's just, it's a team effort being able to win something more big. We can have our individual goals, but as a team, we have to work together.
That's great.
I think another reason our team is like so bonded together in such like an individualistic sport is because we do a lot of team bonding outside of practice. And I feel like that's so important for like every team and every sport to do, 'cause it just helps connect you on like a more personal level. You got a question?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to, I used to coach cross-country, and one great thing about, there's many great things about cross-country, but one is that it's not just about your number-one runner, it's about your number-five runner, and your six and seven. And so much of developing a team and developing that camaraderie, you know, as a coach and as a team, is really, you know, you know, always, never just focusing just on, no offense, on the number-one runner, but really, but really looking for like, you know, learning how to run as a, you know, as a pack, learning how to develop your four, five, and six. And motivation's such a big deal. And not to offend the soccer team at all, but as a, you know, one great thing about cross-country, you know, that's a little different than indoor and outdoor track, is that you do have that summer. Like, coaches think of like a four-phase season, and the summer is the first phase. And like, I know you're practicing soccer in the summer, I'm not saying you just like do nothing, but it's like, it really is like an extra, it's like massive season when you really think about it. Like, it really is part of it. And the commitment to do that just builds, like, the phase two doesn't work without that work in phase one. And it really is this cool, like, when it all works well and, you know, it all clicks, it really is a magic, magical season when it happens. So congratulations, it's awesome.
So I have a question. My husband's gonna kill me 'cause he ran cross-country. But is there just seven on a team? Is that the most allowed?
So we have like a pretty big team. I think we had maybe 16 or 17 girls on the team. But when it comes to scoring for the meets, only five runners score. And then for the bigger meets like states and all states, you can only have seven runners who run in the races. So those are considered like a top seven.
Okay.
And that's like varsity. And then the other runners, they run in all of our dual meets against all of our other towns. So they have about five or six races, and we all train together as we're basically one big team. But when it comes down to the smaller, the bigger meets like states and all states, there's only seven runners and only five score.
And then is there a JV team, or is that part of the 16?
That's part of the 16. They don't race at the bigger meets. They, we have alternates, so we'll have one or two girls who are like our eighth and ninth runners. They're alternates, and if someone was to get hurt or sick, they would run. And then, yeah, but they're all, they're all part of the team. They don't just race.
Okay.
They're also a huge part of our motivation. They came out, what was it, hours, like an hour for states and all states, to watch us sitting in the cold, cheering us on. So they definitely gave a lot of support towards us winning states and all states.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to boys soccer. Also had a phenomenal season. Reed was one of our captains this year. So believe it or not, we hadn't won a league championship since 1989. And this was the first, yeah, seems pretty wild, first league championship since 1989.
Is that Mr. Tetralt here?
So Mr. Tetralt was on the team in 1997, when we did not win the league championship, but we won the state championship.
Ah, I stand corrected.
Yes. And so we hadn't won a league championship since 89, and we hadn't been to the state finals since 1997. And this year's team did both of those things. Can't say enough good things about them. They went 17, 4, and 2. Just a phenomenal, phenomenal season. And like I said, made it all the way to the state finals. So Reed and Charles, I don't know if you guys have anything you wanna talk about.
Yeah. So when I was voted captain at the beginning of the year by my teammates and coaches, it just made me very excited for the season to come. And like over the summer, I was able to work with my other three captains, who happened to be some of my best friends. And we did captain's practices throughout the summer, and we just like prepared for the season. And then when the season started, we all kind of knew we had something special. We lost a lot of talent from last year, but we had kind of like a team chemistry and bond that we were missing. So we were all very good friends on and off the field. We were able to work together and like help each other through the ups and downs of the season. Like, it feels very long. It's only a three-month season, but there's a lot packed into it. It's very taxing on your mind and body, but we all were able to help each other through that. And we had a lot of success. We were able to beat Melrose twice, which always feels good. We were able to beat Lexington again, they're a big D1 powerhouse. And then we secured the fifth seed in the tournament. And then when the tournament came, we kind of had it looming on us from last year, how we lost in the first round when we were the seventh seed. And none of us wanted to go through that feeling again. And that kind of gave us extra motivation to be able to play at home again and to redeem ourselves. And when we won that game, like kind of all the nerves just went out the window. We were in it, we were ready. And then as the tournament games kept going, you know, we're practicing every day, had no days off. But at that point, like your body, it hurts, but it doesn't matter. You just have to keep going and just give it everything you have. And then although we didn't finish the season with the win that we all wanted, it doesn't like leave a damper on the season at all, 'cause all of us had so much fun. I know that was my favorite season of soccer I've ever played, and I've been playing since I was three. I was able to make a lot of new friends this year, met a lot of new guys. The freshmen coming up played a big role in the team. The players that didn't get in very much, they had a bigger role in the team than I'm sure they know. They were working hard every single day in practice, never letting up, no matter what. And we also had a lot of leaders that weren't our captains, like Charles. He's a junior, he wasn't a captain, but I invited him here with me, 'cause I know how big of a role he played. Very confident in his ability to continue that next year. And it was a very successful season overall, and I know all of us had a great time.
Yeah, I agree with everything he said. And one thing that was really special for me about this season is I was a transfer student, so I went to St. John's Prep for my freshman and sophomore year. And I liked it there, but I also felt there was kind of something missing. So I came back. One of the major reasons was to get a chance to play on this team. And it was one of the best decisions I've ever made. It was by far the most fun sports season I've ever had, most successful, too. I'm fully confident that I made the right decision. And, you know, even though, I mean, we accomplished so much, and even though we didn't get that final last thing, that state championship, that's not, that's not what we really mainly take away from the season. We learned throughout the playoff run and throughout our success in the regular season, that the support for the Wakefield soccer program is so much bigger than we ever, than we ever realized. The 1997 team, the last team that won the state championship, they were following our run, and because of it, they all got together for the first time in like probably over 10 years. And because of it, they all got together for the first time in like probably over ten years. One of them came and spoke to us, and that's what he told us. He said, you guys have no idea how your run is unifying people, not only in your team, but outside in the whole community. So it's amazing to see that support and to see the people that came to watch us throughout our playoff games. I mean, when we look out in the crowd, it's just, that's who we're playing for. It's a huge factor in how we play. We're so proud to represent them. And I think that's just what we play for. And our, our, our team chemistry was truly there. I mean, we did stuff outside at practice all the time. We went to breakfast, we went to get food, we would celebrate. I mean, while we didn't win, it was still a major success. And I think it's a sports season that we'll all always remember. And I'm excited moving forward to step up as a senior and have it maybe an even bigger role. And we just, today we had our meeting for captain applications. I applied and I hope I get it. But even if I don't, I'm ready to step up and be there for the team and support us in any way we need to make another successful run.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to congratulate all of you for your success. But I think even more impressive is the way you're representing yourselves and the way you're representing the school. You know, I think you're a great testament to why extracurricular activities, whether it be sports, theater, et cetera, is so important. Just hearing about the things that you've either come to realize or achieve or experienced, the teamwork, the camaraderie, the representing the school, all those sorts of things. Exactly what we hope is gonna happen. And I was here after ninety-eighty-nine, but before ninety-seven. We were terrible. And mostly athletics we had, so this is a sweet spot y'all are hitting. And it's really fun being an alum and obviously being on the school committee and getting to cheer all of you on. So thank you for representing us and the, and the, and the school so well. And congratulations to all of you individually and as a team. It's really great to watch and be a part of, so congratulations.
Oh, I didn't know. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so the ninety-seven alumni that you had in, that spoke to you about sort of your role in the community, and that goes for sort of all of you, is completely correct. So, you know, it may, maybe you lost like the last game, but it absolutely feels like a win to the town because you carried like everybody with you. And those shootouts in the end, like it was just, it was awesome. You couldn't have asked for like a better game. And whatever the outcome was, you absolutely played like champions. Your teamwork on the field was outstanding. The number of sort of young kids that I saw in the stands for the games like cheering you on, I think just seeing themselves in you and just talking about sort of your footwork. I think most of the younger kids were just in awe of how many times you had the ball. Because they can't, and they're just like, oh, my God. The height you were getting, the, I don't know the goalie's name. Andrew. That kid is, I don't know, he's like a magnet. It was insane. So just seeing it all around and knowing that although, you know, there was that one last game, it's, I think your winners is like just across the board. It was just a phenomenal season. And thank you for sort of letting the community be a part.
So thank you for coming. You're all very well spoken. So I felt like I was at a press conference towards the end. I just have a question for captains. Do they nominate them, do they announce them at the year-end banquet? Or is it something that's done at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, it's done at the banquet, and ours is in a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks? Is that the same for the cross-country?
Yeah, we already had our banquet, so these are upcoming captains.
Oh, congratulations.
We had one more, Mave Schrammhorn.
And Willie, is anyone of the seniors that you're gonna continue sports in college? Or is that, you don't know yet?
Maybe like a running club.
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing for me, maybe just club soccer.
Yeah.
Not committed.
Okay. And did you have a comment?
So I'd just like to say from all of your teachers and all the faculty, thank you so much. You know, you don't, it's hard to see the impact that you have, right? But I hope that when, you know, each, each group was talking, I hope that, you know, after, after the girl spoke, I was gonna tell you guys, good luck, no pressure. Because such an impressive group, and you're equally impressive. And I think, and my hope is, and I might sound like a parent right now, but I'm gonna go for it anyway here, is that, you know, you hear the talk from each group and the similarities about the people making the place, right? It's the relationships. It's because it's those relationships that kind of got you through and created that kind of the outcomes, right? And so we see it in other extracurricular activities. We see it in band, we see it in, in different sports. But listening to you talk, it just kind of, it's amazing. You don't know you're saying it, but the way that the relationships that you've made and the memories that you've created for yourselves and others, huge, just so big, so big. And there were little guys, you know, I don't know if you remember, you just saw fifth graders speak just ahead of you, right? That was you a moment ago, right? And, and there are guys walking around that see you at Brothers and see you downtown and say like, so if we can do anything to help you as you, as you're moving on or things that you're working on, please don't hesitate to reach out to, to any one of us. So, great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's fun, it's coming next week.
Right? It's, these are tough audiences, tough. Next up, we, we welcome, we have some visitors here on Zoom. Next up, we welcome Amy McLeod and Diana, that are gonna talk about a service learning experience that I think is going to be amazing for our students and our community. Amy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So we have the slides up here in the studio. And so we have just the title slide up. But if you let me know when to switch slides, I will switch away.
Perfect, thank you. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about the service learning trip opportunity. We're really excited to talk about this tonight. And I've been really fortunate to work with Diana Ho, who we've been talking about this idea for a little while. And then we're excited to present some information tonight. I'm gonna let Diana do run through the slides in a minute. I just wanted to kind of give the background of, you know, we've been thinking about service trips as another group of students. It's interesting, right? We came after listening to the kids talk about fifth grade and going to Camp Borndell and coming together as a community. It's my hope that as our seniors and juniors get ready to start leaving the school, they see themselves as part of a community that can give back to others. And I think that there's no better way to do that than to engage in a service trip, to give back to another community, to learn from people who are helping communities that are less fortunate than ours and who are, are learning, you know, lessons on that trip. Not only taking in another culture, potentially experiencing another language, new food, new environment, but also learning lessons about how important it is of the lessons of service and service to others. And I think that this trip will offer an opportunity for kids who are ready for this, who have been asking for this. And so Diana and I put our heads together. Diana did some deep dive here and came up with a few trips. And we've settled on the one that she's gonna present now. So take it away, Diana.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. So I'm just gonna start off a bit with why we decided for this trip. So Amy already sort of spoke towards it. But a couple of weeks ago, I had some students sitting around at my desk and they were just chatting about our current educational travel opportunities. And the students expressed an interest in traveling as a school community to areas that are outside of Europe. We have some wonderful trips already. They were wondering if we could go to other parts of the world. And they're also really interested in looking at service-focused trips and giving back. So after researching, we connected, we connected with Education First, or EF, which is one of the leading educational travel companies globally. The trip we're presenting tonight is framed around environmental citizenship in the Dominican Republic's central mountain region. It would be open to all WMHS students in grades nine through twelve. There are no language course requirements or anything like that to participate. And the trip would take place during February recess of twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. So I'm just gonna stay on this really briefly. I just wanna give you a quick visual of where the students would be going into. So again, our primary focus on this trip would be providing service in the central mountain region, which is sort of in the middle of the screen. However, students would also engage in two traditional travel excursions that are bookmarking, are bookending their overall travel experience. Next slide, please. So on day one, we would fly into the Dominican Republic. Day two includes a guided tour of the colonial zone in Santo Domingo, followed by a bus ride to the central mountain range for our service learning. Days three through six focus on environmental citizenship projects. They address sustainability, youth development, and responsible tourism. Specific project details will be shared closer to the actual departure because we have to work in collaboration with aid groups that are on the ground. We want this to be meaningful for both our students, but we also want it to be mutually beneficial for the folks that we're visiting and living with. Day seven would include a guided tour of the National Marine Park in the northern part of the Dominican Republic. And then on day eight, we would fly home. Next slide, please. So these are our projected travel dates. So we were hoping to be within February recess. But because we're planning so early, Education First requires that we have a little bit of flexibility in our tour. So we could leave as early as February thirteenth or return as late as February twenty-second. They're gonna try their best to get us right into that sweet spot with our, with our actual break. But we'll get a better idea of when we're actually gonna travel, about two to three months before departure. Next slide, please. In terms of making it happen for our students, we want this to be an equitable, accessible experience for all. Education First has their own scholarship program called the Global Citizen Scholarship. Any student that's enrolled in the trip can participate in that or try to apply to that. And there's both needs and merit-based scholarships available to them. And I think that the scholarship just requires them to create like a little brief video about how that could change their, their world or their view of the world. Also, when students enroll, they each get a customizable tour fundraising page. And this is a bit like a GoFundMe page, but there's no fees associated with it at all. And students can like share that out with their family and friends or community members or the church or mosque or any volunteer groups that they may participate in, which can offset the cost of balance of the trip or at least the onus of the balance of the trip on the students themselves. Next slide, please. I didn't realize there was a funny animation with this. So the total cost of the trip, if students enroll prior to December thirty-first of this year, would be three thousand six hundred and nine dollars. There's obviously gonna be flexible payment options. And Education First stated that their most popular way of paying for this is bi-weekly. And all that would require is an initial ninety-five dollar enrollment fee in order to participate. This fee includes all their airfare, their hotels, their meals, tour director, transportation, tour guides on the ground, any guidance sightseeing, entrances to landmarks, attractions, et cetera. And it also includes their global travel protection. Students are responsible for passports, baggage fees, and sort of any, you know, the odds and ends that they accumulate as time goes on. Next slide, please. So we have twenty-five guaranteed spots available. I think, I believe they said that it could go up as high as forty students, but twenty-five is kind of like the space where they feel most comfortable providing accommodations for students. Again, that enrollment deadline to get any discounts or anything is gonna be December thirty-first. And that's a two hundred dollar discount on the total cost of the trip. Next slide. And so pending approval tonight or in the near future, we would have an info meeting on December nineteenth at six-thirty on Zoom for parents, and details about that would be made available on social media and School Messenger. And next slide. And that's all we have. Any questions?
Oh, go ahead.
No, you're not. I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more piece before you took questions. Just on the focus of the trip being the environmental responsibility, environment and sustainability. We have more and more of our students who are sort of gravitating to that area of interest. So this is sort of a twofer for us. We're hoping that some of our students who are in AP Environmental, some of our students who are interested in oceanography and things like that, who are looking at the environmental impact and the environmental sustainability that other communities are using, this might be a draw for them as well. So a little bit different than some of the other trips that are going to Europe.
I had one comment and a few questions. So my comment is Doug has mentioned your name in a positive light many times, Diana. I have heard your name so many times about how awesome you are. So it's nice to finally meet you virtually. You're kind of a legend. I've heard so many times how awesome you were helping with the high school project and other things, so.
Thank you.
I just glad I got that in. One quick question, is there a minimum amount of students we need to run the trip?
So I believe, I'm trying to think of what they said the minimum was. I think we would have to have at least twenty students participate. But they, EF is also able to bring on more students from like local schools. So if we wanted to partner with like a Melrose or Stonemore or any school like that, we could do that to, to get up to the right amount of kids.
And then in terms of teachers to students, is this like five to one like the other trip?
Six to one. So, yeah, six to one. Yeah, it's consistent with, I believe passports is also six to one.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Just a quick question. Thank you for, you know, potentially making this opportunity available. Huge proponent of these sorts of experiences. And service learning is really important. So I'm curious, like what's the pre, pre-work that's gonna be made available? Or is it gonna be pre-work? What's gonna happen after the trip to really make this service learning as opposed to just simply, you know, community service or something along those lines?
Sure. So one big component during the service days is reflection. And students would be working with groups and it's led through EF itself. And they'll, they'll do journaling and sort of reflective pieces around that. And I think that's something that we could definitely be working on prior to departure to how to, how to make it sort of more of a piece of our curriculum. I think it's already really intersectional with what we're already doing, but we can definitely build in pieces that are Wakefield-specific and are curriculum-specific.
Yeah, we definitely encourage that, just having had the opportunity to lead a lot of these, these sorts of experiences, including one to the DR, slightly different topic than the environmental one. But I think that pre-work and then that certainly the post, post-work is really important because, you know, depending upon the experience of people coming to the, to the, to the trip with or the immersion with, that can really just add to their learning, their overall learning and the experience just becomes that much more rich, which will already be amazing, so. And thanks for, thanks for coordinating this, it sounds wonderful.
Kevin, one other way too is, excitingly enough, we have a bunch of students who just created an environmental advocacy club. So our clubs are exploding. Kids have tons of ideas of things that they wanna sort of, you know, get together and explore. So I think that this could be a nice tie-in to that group afterwards. Either the students who go on the trip reporting out to that club or hopefully we'll have some of the kids on the club who will go on the trip and maybe thinking about ways that that can impact their work here in Wakefield. So we'll tie them in definitely.
That's great, thank you.
Hey, Dana, I had a question. Well, first off, this sounds amazing. I think my fifth grader would go now, and I'd let him. This sounds fantastic. I was curious about accommodations. So it sounds like you're flying in and out of a fairly sort of urban environment. It seems like there'd be hotels there. When they're in the mountainous region, are there also, are there like, like ecotourism hotels? Or is it, are they staying with families? Or what's, what does that look like while they're doing their service work over the five days?
So like you said, it would be ecotourism hotels. The Dominican Republic has put a substantial amount of work into infrastructure around that and providing those spaces. So they would be mostly hotel-based.
That's great. And just kind of a comment is noticing that there's, there are scholarship opportunities. I think this is sort of the first travel thing that's come, come forward with us, both merit and need-based scholarships with the foundation. That seems like a great move on their part, good partnership there. And then on the learning part, to Kevin's, there's a slide that, that probably because we, we ask you to be short, that's missing from your deck that I got in the, in the email, is the educational resources so that there's a, there's a learning guide where students could learn or earn a half credit in high school. And there's even a possibility for some college credit if they wanted to do some additional work when they got back.
Yeah. And there's also an opportunity for the chaperones themselves to get graduate credits through SNHU. So that is an aspect that we could explore further. I just didn't wanna inundate you with.
This is the shiny stuff for me. This is like, I think this is awesome. This is like, I think this is awesome. This is so good. And is it, are we prepared to sort of have supports there to help them sort of through this or however we need to to partner with EF to to make those things real for our students?
Yeah, no, that's something that we can definitely dig in deeper with EF and get going.
That's awesome. This is this is super exciting and and hope we kind of see see more of it. So thank you for for realizing the need and doing the work.
Pleasure.
Appreciate it.
If there's no other questions, I think we have a motion. Don't we have to vote on this?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
Move that the school committee approve the environmental citizenship in the Dominican Republic Service Learning Trip for Wakefield Memorial High School students from February fourteenth to February twenty-first as presented.
Just have a quick question. Were those the extended dates?
No, I can.
Shall we just add something to that motion, maybe modify the motion to include their extended dates if needed?
Sure. Move that the school committee, so I'll withdraw my original motion. Let me find this slide and I will be correct. Okay. Move that the school committee approve the environmental citizenship in the Dominican Republic Service Learning Trip for Wakefield Memorial High School students from date range February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
To February.
To February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Collarin?
Yes.
Mr. Pontinella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
And Dr. Viscabel.
Yes.
Uh, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Amy. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, we welcome Brian Black, architect from SMMA, to to talk a little bit about the high school project, just to give the school committee and our community an an update in terms of where we are.
Good evening. It's great to be with you tonight. I am going to give a quick update. Let me just go ahead and share a quick presentation that we made. And hopefully you're seeing our title page. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. So I want to give a quick update, but and and last time, uh, this is a tough act to follow, by the way. In the district, and I think we're going to have to double up our trophy case sizes in the building to keep up with all the excellent athletics. But I wanted to, um, this time, uh, instead of giving another overview of design and and going into sort of, you know, renderings and things like that, design has not substantially changed, uh, since last time, and we're really working on, uh, details of construction and working out coordination among various trades, or sorry, disciplines of our designers that will then become the trades that are working within the building, and we're trying to make that a really smooth handoff as much as we can. So just, you know, here's the snapshot at the entry of the building. Again, not much really changing here, but there are elements of this that are being advanced and and sort of refined, and I would say improved even as we go. I wanted this time to give a quick glimpse into one of the pieces that's really, it tends to lag a little bit behind in design in terms of the schedule, but is really an important piece of the environment of the future school, which is environmental graphic design. And so what it, what is that? That's basically, it's an artistic representation within the school of both the school and the community culture. And it can be very colorful, it can be illustrative, it can have inspirational language and phrases. So it's sort of the decoration at key moments of the interior of the school that do all of these things on the screen. It promotes a strong sense of Wakefield pride, uh, you know, linking with a sense of history and and the town culture. And we heard you last time suggesting that we, uh, you know, reach out to the community and understand what the whole town is really expecting and would like to see in in the new school. And so, um, that is definitely part of of the process here. These graphics should also create sort of educational opportunities, again, at key moments, and sometimes these might be infographics, they might be interactive pieces. It's not necessarily all completely flat designs. So we it, we try to make it engaging. In addition to all of that, there's a very functional aspect or layer of this, which is the signage throughout the building, which helps with wayfinding and place-making and just giving people a sense of comfort moving around the building and understanding their place within it, how to get from place to place. All of that tends to sort of ease the mind and make make the day much easier to to tackle. We also want these elements to mesh really with the design. So those are all things that the team, uh, we have an environmental graphics department within our office at SMMA. They've, uh, they had a meeting yesterday with a a working group that was assembled, made up of TBC members, educators, administration staff, so that we're getting, uh, good guidance in terms of what we're starting to show. And we also, again, are listening. So we surveyed a hundred and seventy-five students, thirty-four staff, seventy-five community members. And one of the the underlying desires was to celebrate togetherness and community. So we've, we've integrated that idea into what we're doing with the design. So so how do we start to organize the content? That's where we are now and and what the team reviewed in terms of the approach. We don't, at this stage, have pretty pictures of an end result. What I wanted to kind of talk about was more the process. And, uh, we're trying to link to the the history, historic sort of origins of of Wakefield, where, um, the founder of the town was, uh, a someone who developed the rattan industry in the region. And so we took inspiration from that in terms of not only the craft and the patterning, but also the idea of sort of a braid, if you will, and how to create connections and sort of tie things together. We even have been inspired spatially in the building by some of these ideas. And they start to, can become organic also. In terms of a present, uh, view of of the community, uh, we wanted to link, again, to the amazing natural and cultural resources in the town. You can see here pictures of, uh, the bandstand and BB library. So, um, really, um, you know, linking to places where the community finds their identity and they like to be. And so we want, we want the school to be a place where, again, students, staff, everyone wants to spend time. And, um, the third part of of the content is is more sort of looking into the future. And we know that diversity, equity, and inclusion is an important, you know, element of of education now. And it's since, you know, in the even the last few years, it's really become the in the forefront of of, uh, folks' mind in terms of education. So we 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 took the warrior mascot or label, and we wanted to lean into that, but not in any particular kind of interpretation. We wanted to maybe open that up to be more inclusive and and even open to interpretation, maybe. So, um, you know, the idea is to start with that as the premise, to be a warrior, but, you know, sort of asking, what are you fighting for? And so there could be, uh, throughout the school, opportunities to talk about, you know, what students are thinking about in certain moments as they go through their day. And so, you know, we we can start to fill these in, and and there'll be a lot of sort of iterations of this and different placements where we can do these things, whether they're, you know, more related to health and wellness or, um, you know, teamwork, uh, or, you know, just being a generally a leader. So then our focus will turn to throughout the school, where we can apply some of these ideas and, you know, obvious choices are adjacent to the the main dining commons, where here you can see on the left, the entrance to the gym, uh, opportunities on walls to celebrate, you know, accomplishments and make announcements, uh, and and really just to sort of enliven the space. Although, as I say that word, I I catch myself because many times what we're trying to create in these schools is more a sense of calm, uh, because there's so much going on. There's a lot of pressure, um, and there's a lot to take in in terms of the senses. And so a lot of what we try to build is really, again, a sense of calm and 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 ease of being sort of in this place. Obviously, the gym is going to be a big opportunity for, um, you know, using, uh, school colors and and logos, especially, you know, on the floor, on the face of the bleachers even. There can be large-scale graphics. On the walls, we have acoustic panels that can have patterns and even imagery put on them. So, um, the gym's always a big piece of this. The media center, which faces out to the front of the school, has a couple of big walls where we've tested out, you know, putting some, uh, some of some of those statements and some graphics. And and I don't want to show like the very earliest options or or iterations of that because it is very early. We got great feedback from the team yesterday from from, uh, the focus group. And so we'll be working on those, uh, in the future. So that's our process, and and the types of treatments are similar to what you see here. This is just a taste. These are not our designs. These are just sort of a sampling of of the kind of graphics and and sort of, uh, life that we want to try to bring to some of the environment here. So that is an ongoing effort. Again, that is in the early stages, even though it's sort of late in the game in terms of the project. More broadly, just a quick update on schedule and budget. We are on schedule. We've submitted a sixty percent construction document package, uh, which came with, uh, cost estimating, and we are on budget as well at two-hundred-and-twenty-million, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. The design was submitted to MSBA, and we are expecting comments back on that set before Christmas. In the meantime, we've already proceeded to ninety percent phase, um, and we'll keep going. We're we're issuing early packages, uh, into the spring when construction starts, uh, and we expect a school opening in early twenty-twenty-seven and later that year, uh, the site work and the fields being completed. So that is where we are with the school. I'm happy to field any questions about any of this. Hasn't.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I didn't have a question. I did. Brian, could you talk a little bit more about your survey? One seventy-five students, seventy-five community members. I'm just curious, um, how how did that outreach occur?
Yeah, so it was, um, let me go back to that slide here.
Thirty-four.
Right, so we, we, we send out, uh, surveys, uh, to the community and to, uh, through the school. And, uh, if Amy is still on, maybe, uh, she could jump in and talk about maybe some of the behind-the-scenes work that helped us get that done. We initially didn't get as strong a, uh, a response, but we, we kept at it and, uh, you know, we maybe added some some more evocative questions. But, um, you know, we had a lot of help to get the word out that this was an important piece that would actually, um, help to represent, uh, you know, the folks who are are out there and maybe, uh, feel like maybe they don't have a voice. So we use this technique for all of our schools to get really good, a good sense of of what's happening. And we feel that it 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 is is well-representative because it's a process where, um, you know, you don't have to be out in front of a microphone saying what what you're looking for. And so, uh, it allows people to, you know, be honest and frank. And we saw a lot of parity, uh, or not necessarily parity, but, uh, maybe consistency with the themes, uh, you know, about, um, wellness and supporting each other and, um, and community. There's such a close-knit community here, and we really want to honor that.
I, excuse me, I I appreciate, I love the idea of a survey. I think I'm not, the number of students that participated seems consistent with what we've seen from other sort of surveys that have happened, whether it's through wellness or or other sort of initiatives. I'm curious where, for students, I think it's easy. You just sort of email out the WPS, you know, kits. But in terms of like staff and community, um, they seem, I don't, I'm curious how we reached out, like what avenues were used to reach out to people to get voices. I I absolutely appreciate what I'm hearing in terms of what the results were, but I just know that our community is, um, is very diverse. And so I'm I'm just curious more directly on the process because I want to make sure that we're hearing from sort of a multitude of voices, if that makes sense. It's it's kind of funny because I I really love the results. I just want to make sure that we're hearing from everybody. Or enough enough diverse voices to make sure that, um, it's a, it's a, it's a good mosaic.
Sure. I I I appreciate the question. Uh, I'll have to, um, uh, get back to you with more information about about how we did the survey because that's really the work of our environmental graphics team.
I don't. I think, I think Amy helped with it. I I sent the information.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, in in terms of how, uh, you know, how those surveys physically got to the to the folks, um, I'll have to come back to you, you know, with more information. I was not directly involved in in gathering that.
Okay.
Did you not complete the survey?
No, and that's right. Like, I get stuck on the seventy-five community members because I know that there's a number of community members that are involved in the process. And it would be very easy for the project team to reach out to those folks. But then you have a whole, there's a number of people that that don't quite pay attention as directly and don't necessarily know that this work is happening, that I think would appreciate. I I don't, I don't know how that information would get out there, whether it's a, an article in the item or whether it's, uh, social media or on the the government, you know, the town website. That's kind of what I'm, I'm just drawn to that seventy-five community members. That could easily be, that easily could be made up of like the people that have been involved in the process to this point and have led them, lent themselves to to sort of question, you know, questionnaires or surveys in the past. So what does that outreach look like? I want to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
I agree.
Good question.
But thank you, Brian. Really appreciate sort of the other, the other side of the coin, as it were, you know, from from design. It's it's good to know where we are in the process.
Very good. And I I I do appreciate your question. I'll get back to you, Mr. Ingles, with, uh, some more data about how we, how we, how we communicated the questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Does anyone have any other questions for Brian while we have them? I was surprised at how quick the field would be done. Like pleasantly surprised.
Little dirt, little grass seed.
I don't know. I just thought it'd be more like a petracula. I don't know. I just thought it'd be more. But that's great.
Yeah.
Yay.
It's a lot, it's a lot of people working very hard. Yep. You know, there's, there's a lot of pressure to get, get, uh, you know, things open on time. And, um, it it might be good to hear from, uh, the, our construction manager on building at some point, who can maybe walk through a little bit more detail in terms of the construction phase. But, um, we can talk to them about maybe some some outreach.
We gotta save some fun for other meetings.
Is Tim here for this or is Tim here for something else?
I think he's just joining in to support.
You want to chime in, Tim?
Yeah. Did you have anything, Tim?
I was just here to take in the presentation and answer a potential question if one came my way. I'm here to support Brian.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Everything we do will be low maintenance.
I don't have any other questions.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Tim.
Take care.
So just final comments from us. You know, we are, tomorrow, Thursday afternoon, we have our community Zoom call. This passed Friday. Karen and I did our third podcast, our district podcast from the superintendents. That's a facilitated podcast by Anthony Guardia, which is, he's actually a great partner and he's really talented at facilitating. So it's a lot of fun. And so that's what's happening. We're just, you know, working really hard to get everyone safely to the vacation break. And from all of the administrators, all of our faculty and staff, we'd just like to wish all of our students and families a safe and healthy holiday break. So that's it for us.
You have a question?
I have a podcast question.
No, go ahead.
So I think I subscribe to the WCAT YouTube channel, so I get easy access to those. But I was wondering if it's worth embedding a link in some of the school communications, whether if it's something that Ms. McLeod is sending out or Ms. Webb or, yeah.
Yep. We can absolutely do that. Yeah.
Awesome.
So it will also shorten up my, our last week's message was a little bit longer than we had hoped, our update. And I appreciate the feedback from everybody, but thank you. Yes, we can. We can absolutely do that.
And maybe on the school webpage for folks that don't get the emails.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're going to go to budget, back to budget.
Great. Good evening, everyone. So you have the financial statements through November 30th, 2023. You'll see we have expenditures and encumbrances, leaving us an available balance right now, right over $5 million. So our remaining percentage is just over 10%. We're in good shape with the local budget and spending down, as you see on the grant pages, we're just a little over $600,000 of our grants. And then the revolving accounts are holding a little steady at just over $3 million. Of course, that includes Circuit Breaker, which is not a revolving account, but we're expecting our second payment on the end of December for Circuit Breaker, which again, to remind everyone, covers our out-of-district tuition costs, which is really important for us. Does anyone have any questions of the financials through November?
Seeing none.
Okay. And then we just have a motion for the payrolls of November, the two payrolls.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 20 and 22 as presented. Second.
A motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Judy.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Dr. Scappolo?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. And we do have one gift tonight. It's a gift from the Walton PTO for the teachers and staff to purchase items for the classrooms and for the school. It's $2,000.
Okay. Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $2,000 from the Walton School PTO for the teachers and staff to purchase items from the classroom and school. Second.
Excuse me. A motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Dr. Scappolo?
Yes.
That's it for budget.
Thank you, Christine. Does anyone have any questions for Christine? Thank you.
For chair comments, I just have two tonight. One is wishing those families who are celebrating a happy Hanukkah. Tonight is the sixth night of Hanukkah. And I know some of us, school committee members and town administrative members attended the community lighting of the menorah, which was the first night on Sunday. And then I actually had the opportunity to go again, I'm sorry, the first night was Thursday, sorry. I had the opportunity to go again on Sunday. So we are thankful for the menorah, the common, which I believe started six years ago. It's been a great opportunity for my family, my kids to learn about the Jewish religion. It's more than just a lighting. They actually, there were two rabbis there on Thursday night. On Sunday night, the family did a nice job explaining why they light the candles. So just thank you for bringing that into our community and sharing their religion.
The other comment I have is just real quick, and it's going to probably be on our future agenda. The honor roll in Galvin came out and it did not have high honors. So I received a few messages from parents because there was no communication that that was going to change. I know we're hearing buzz about the honor roll changing at the Galvin. So I just, maybe we can bring that in January, bring the administrations in so we can understand before it actually happens. And then I have some, I see if the parents are willing to share what they sent to me. I can ask them, bring that to the next meeting. That's all I have. Oh, Stephen, do you have a negotiation update?
I do. I can share that, so the labor team, negotiating team met with teachers on Monday on the, with the WEA negotiating team, trying to get a contract in place. We were unsuccessful, sort of land on a common space on Monday. But we continue to work. I think it's, I think it's been hard for sort of both sides of the table. We've been doing this for a while. I think it's, we started back in May, correct me if I'm wrong. And so it's just been, it's been long. But I know that everyone that is at the table is at the table with good intentions. We want to do what's right by teachers and for the district and our community to make, you know, Wakefield Public Schools, everything that we know that they can be. And so that's the work that we're trying to do. I wish we had more to report. We're going to meet again with teachers on this coming Monday. And we have also, both sides sort of agreed that we're gonna, we're gonna extend our meeting times a little bit so that we can try and get more work done. And just, we just need more time to talk. So hopefully we get there. I know especially around the holiday season, you know, people would like to have this closed out and it's unfortunate that we don't, but I think we have the right people there to make it happen. So thankful for the WEA leadership, you know, sort of being a good partner in the space and for everything that the administration brings to every meeting that we have, to include Christine, who sits there with the members and the work that she puts in and her team is amazing.
Thank you.
Yep. Can we continue on?
Yeah, thank you for your time and to the WEA, who also met over the summer.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
We will.
That is all I have. So subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. Mr. Markham is not with us this evening. Do you have a report or does Kevin want to?
I could give a little bit of an update, which would, so Christine sort of took the lead for most of that meeting as we talked about, we're about halfway through our budget season and we're starting to get prepared to meet up with our FinCom partner as we start to craft the budget that's going to be presented sort of in April at town meeting and get voted on. So that work has started in earnest. I think the next step in the process is I think we're gonna meet with some principals and talk about sort of specific school needs, what they think needs to be targeted. That'll be part of the discussion. And so it's.
I can talk a little bit about that. We also talked about a budget timeline and what it's going to look like from now until March. So buckle up. We'll have some work to do. But what we're doing now is we're kind of forecasting where we are and where we need to be and looking at all of our collective bargaining agreements. And right before the break, I'll be giving principals packets. They have some homework to do over break, just to kind of look and reflect over the past three years of actual expenditures and then what they're looking forward to move their schools forward in the next year. And then Doug and I will be meeting. We do, we take it on the road a little bit and we meet with schools, we meet with department heads, and then we bring it back to the subcommittee and we invite FinCom to join us. So be a lot of conversation. I know Doug also talks about, we do meetings with every school. We invite every department, every teacher, every parent can come and give us a wish list about things to add because we can't fund everything, but it really helps us build this budget and the next couple of budgets. So, you know, it's my time of year after the holidays as we jump right in.
I know in past years, there was like meetings with parents too. Do you plan to do that again?
Aside from that, we, Tim presented on some capital planning work that he started up with. I think often during the budget process, we see a list of sort of capital planning requests. Tim is starting to recompile that list. And then we also talked about unanticipated expenses to the budget. And so Dr. Lyons talked a little bit about some out-of-district placements that we've taken on since the start of the school year. Some folks have sort of moved into town that have needed some out-of-district placements and that wasn't something that was forecast previously. So just making some online movement around there to support those students.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah.
Labor and personnel.
I would reflect back to my negotiation update.
Okay. Student services. Eileen, do you have an update? I know we haven't met.
Yeah, we haven't met since the last meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow with Doug to kind of give him an update and decide a path forward after we've been researching school start times.
Thank you. Policy and communications.
Yeah, we met last week and we talked about homework guidelines. Dr. Lyons drafted some language regarding homework guidelines for the district. We discussed grading policies and other guidelines in other districts to kind of help draft our own policy. And in the end, we decided that we wanted to hear feedback from building principals and teachers about what they feel about the proposed language. So that's going to happen. I think Dr. Lyons is going to reach out for the feedback and after that feedback, we're going to bring it back to the subcommittee and then hopefully, you know, if we all like it, we'll bring it to the main body to look at. We also discussed the policy book revisions. And so last meeting, we basically put it on the table to make a motion to approve the revisions to Section J. So without further ado, we'll make that motion. I'll read Pete's, Pete's paper. I move that the school committee approve Wakefield Public Schools' policy book, Section J, as presented. Second.
A motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none.
Doug, is there anything you want to mention, some of those little notes that need to be pulled out of those sections?
I think they should be squared away and we'll go through it soup to nuts to make sure that the formatting and editing.
I'll work with Judy on that before it goes onto the website.
Sorry, jumped the gun there. So there was discussion. Okay. Our roll call vote, please.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Dr. Scappolo?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. I know there are a lot of policies within the Section J.
Yep. I think we're moving on to other sections. Works on some revisions, will be coming back. Yeah, that's all I got. I don't think we'll meet until probably after break.
Does anyone have a liaison report? The environmental sustainability committee hasn't met since our last meeting, but we're meeting this Thursday. So I'll have an update at the next meeting.
Are they, are they supporting the Christmas light recycling?
Yeah, that was on there.
That was their initiative.
It was on there. I don't know if it's there exactly because I wasn't at the last meeting, I don't think, but it's on their Facebook page. So I just assumed. And I know they sent an email about getting involved with the, aren't we doing STEM curriculum coming up or review?
A review, correct.
So I don't know if they want to be involved with that.
I don't know. That's a question.
Oh, no. I do know. I'll phone you the email.
Great. Look forward to it.
Our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. This year went by fast, as they always do. School committee comments. Does anyone have any closing comments for the last meeting of 2023? Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, just along, kind of follow your comments earlier. Just want to wish everyone well as we approach the end of the year, particularly the families, students, faculty, staff. And happy, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, you know, any of the celebrations that are happening now. Just hope everyone has a chance to rest and relax and spend some time with family and loved ones and to all of you too. It's been a, it's been a great year. You're right, it's gone by really, really fast. So can't believe two 2024s on the horizon. So looking forward to working with all of you in the new year. Enjoy your breaks if you get one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say happy holidays to sort of everybody and to educators. I hope they, I hope they have a, get a well-earned break. One thing about sort of the season around sort of December is giving and sort of giving of yourself is something that comes up and is in like every postcard or every Christmas card. And I just think that's a space that Wakefield and sort of Wakefield Public Schools excels at. I see sort of compassionate, empathetic student groups, parent organizations, just whether it's sort of toys donated or raising money for the food pantry or it's just everywhere right now. And it's just one of those things that makes me really proud to sort of be from Wakefield and be a part of sort of the mechanism that is, you know, our community. So just thank you to everybody that's, that sort of has a hand in that. And it's our schools, it's our kids, it's our families, it's people from outside the community and it's just, it's awesome to see. So everything from menorah lighting to the lighting of the trees down in the common, it's just, it's awesome.
Thank you. Judy, you can chime in if you want. Okay. Just thank everyone for all their work throughout the year. Thank you to the teachers and the administration. It's been a great year so far. You know, it's like, I think we're actually a little over right half the school year. Did I read right under, aren't we on day? Oh, we're only on day 60? Oh, I got excited. It goes by. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do. Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. Second.
A motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
I wasn't sure. Mr. Fontenella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Dr. Scappolo?
Yes.
That's it? Good night. Thank you.